Good evening and welcome to the Beverly School Committee's Curriculum Instruction Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 11th, 2023, and we are meeting in a hybrid model today using a remote meeting application provided at no cost to our district, allowing for a remote participation and for public access to the open portions of the meeting. We also are recording tonight and being broadcast and streamed by BevCam, so thank you BevCam. Due to system upgrades, closed captioning is now available immediately on the BevCam broadcast and will be applied to the recorded version on the YouTube channel within 24 hours. On June 16th, 2021, the former governor could sign Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and on February 12th, and again on July 16th, 2022, he extended the provisions to, among other things, allow public bodies to hold, continue to hold, remote meetings until March 31st, 2023. This specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present and asks the body to use technical methods to allow safe access for the public. We would encourage viewers to utilize BevCam streaming options this evening if possible. As a note, Beverly has prior approval for remote participation, although through that permission, a chair and a quorum will need to be physically present when this act and its extension expires. Okay, so joining us today are members of the school committee and various members of the district administration and leadership teams. We will conduct a full roll call attendance in a moment for the record, since this meeting application sometimes does not display all participants. Please remember that any audio video you supply on this platform will become part of the meeting record. As such, please use your mute functionality to prevent background noises. I would now like to ask President Abel to call, conduct a roll call to ensure that you're both able to hear me and that we can hear you this evening.
That would be my pleasure. Online, we're joined by student representative Zina Ba. Can you hear and see us? Just come off mute for a moment to confirm?
Yeah.
Great. And Cameron Pisano?
Here.
Great. Annabelle Miller?
Here.
Okay. The other members are Dorothy Flaherty, who is actually here in person, and she's using the application to present. Okay. We have our school committee members, Jeffrey Silva?
Here.
And I'm Rachel Abel. We're also joined by Karen Robinson?
Here.
And Kate Twombly?
Here.
We have some more student representatives in the audience. We have Jayden Aravella there, and Julia Bissette. Also, is Emma Judge here?
Yeah.
Oh, nice to see you in person. That's great. Thank you, Emma Judge. Okay, so our student representatives are all here. I don't yet see any of our citizen representatives. I had only one tentative reply to the online invite, so we'll just watch for them to join us in a moment. We also have Liz Wilson, who's our recording secretary for this evening. And I got Kate Twombly? Yes, okay. I'd just like to also say that also present, we have, let's see, Paul Casey. I knew that. I knew that, Mr. Casey. And we have Jennifer Thomas, Julie Farrar, Betty Taylor. We have Phil Codere, and Mark Thomas, and I got Jennifer Thomas, and Ryan Wood. Oh, there you are. I couldn't even see you over there. Thank you. So we have our whole BHS principalships here. Okay, I think that's it. I'll keep watching for our citizen reps to join.
Thank you. Before I turn the meeting over to Dr. Flaherty, I'd like to ask, let's see, Dr. Turocek to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. First, give an overview of our agenda this evening. We'll start by, in a moment, asking for a motion to approve the minutes of the November 9th. Oh, that's not right. The December 7th meeting. We'll hear from our student representatives. Then the high school is asking for a policy change for second semester grading. And then we're going to have a real treat with the entire leadership team from the high school here to give us a very, very in-depth overview of many aspects of high school life at BHS. So if we could start, is there a motion to approve the minutes from December 11th, December 7th to 2022?
I will make a motion to approve the December 7th meeting records for the SISIL Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Abel, could you call a rule?
Sure. It's always a little bit challenging. I'll start with our school committee members, Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
And myself, Rachel Abel, yes. I'm just now, oh, that's not a citizen rep, that's Dr. Turocek. Okay, our citizen reps are absent this night, this evening. That's Allison, Lauren, and Lorigan. We will then go to Kate Twombly?
Yes.
Okay. And for our students, Jayden Aravella, Emma Judge, Julia Bissette, Cameron Pisano?
Yes.
Zina Ba?
Yes.
And Annabelle Miller?
Yes.
We have all affirmatives. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, always, an exciting part of our evening is to hear what school life is like at both our middle school and high school. We'll begin with the middle school, and I'll start with our virtual representatives first. So, Zina, would you like to give us any updates?
Yeah. Okay. This late December, there was a holiday happening fundraiser to save up for Nature's Classroom. Fifth and Sixth watched movies, decorated cookies, drank hot cocoa. In total, they raised $4,000. Also, out of all the donations and fundraisers for Nature's Classroom, they saved up $11,600.
That's amazing. You guys have raised so much money in such a short period of time. Some of you might want to think about doing that as a future career. I think you'll be good at it. Yes. All right, let's see. Annabelle Miller, would you like to share anything with us?
Yeah. To kick off everyone's holiday break, we had an all grades holiday decorating contest. Throughout the week, my team was bringing stuffed animals and other things to jazz up our hallways, along with all the other teams helping out their hallways, too. The themes of each hallway were Hail Aquarium, Cabot Blizzard of '78, and Balch Christmas Farm. The eighth grade was by far the most competitive, and we were all checking out each other's hallways throughout the week. But if anyone tried to look at Hale's hallway, they would kick us out. They had guards guarding the hallway. The judges came around on Thursday, the day we got out, and took a look on how they looked. Hale came in first, then Cabot, and then Balch.
Well, that's good to know, because I did get to come and see with Dr. Turocek all the decorating, and it was phenomenal. But I didn't know who won, so thank you for updating us. All right, Jayden, would you like to share your update?
BMS recently had performed, uh, performance for December. Student in all grades performed in a variety of ways. The production of Newsies, under the direction of Mr. Swinnick, performed on stage to full houses two nights in a row. The show was a huge success, and the talent of the performers was very impressive, including a row student rep, Julia. The winter concerts took place on three separate evenings. Strings ensembles, our bands, and our choruses all performed to families and across the city and web as BevCam was there to broadcast. The music department now gears for a busy winter and spring with a field trip plan in June that will include competition and celebration at Canterbury Lake Park.
And the concerts were phenomenal, and you know, this is how you know a play is really good, because I was sick and couldn't come to school, but I watched online, except there was no sound. And I still enjoyed it and sat and watched the entire show, even though I couldn't hear a sound of what was going on. Okay, now for our high school representatives. Oh, we have, oh, Julia. Sorry, Julia.
Okay. On January 28th, BMS is hosting Winter Waffle Land, a family breakfast to raise money for the eighth grade events at the end of the year. In addition to a couple of different breakfast options, this event will include entertainment, raffle baskets, and a BMS store. Another fundraising event is the upcoming eighth grade dance on February 10th. Students are voting on what they want the theme to be and what songs they want to hear to make it a fun night for all.
That, yeah, that waffle day looks great. Good luck. All right, now on to the high school. Virtually, we have Cameron with us.
Yep. So, BHS hosted an on-the-spot admission event with North Shore Community College and Salem State University, where students could review their application and get accepted in all-in-one session. Seniors in advisory have been researching local opportunities to do either a project or a site internship for their REACH program. The sophomore class has been presented with the Essex Tech After Dark program and the application process for it. Dual enrollment classes are being offered this spring at BHS, or for BHS students by Endicott College, Salem State, and North Shore Community College.
That's exciting news. Thank you, Cameron. And Emma, I believe, is here with us.
Well, as Cameron said, we had, um...
Push that button.
Okay, there we go. As Cameron said, in advisory, we did more REACH stuff. My advisory, we talked a lot, like, just brainstorming ideas of what to do locally based off, like, what people had done in the past and stuff. Also, we just had DECA districts at Endicott, and I think a lot of people made it to state, which is super exciting. What else is happening? Oh, the World of Difference, GSA, Women's Empowerment Club, and Alliance for Students of Color are all having a, like, joint meeting to kind of talk about what's going on in the school. And I mean, it's a great opportunity, because a lot of those clubs have the same mission. They just don't often...
Yeah, that's a fabulous idea.
Yeah. And then also, the guidance office recently just sent out an email with a list of a bunch of the scholarships available. I know a lot of my friends who are seniors were all talking about how to pay for college, so that, we're all looking through that list.
It's hard to believe that we're already at the part of the year where we're thinking and talking about graduation scholarships and the REACH internship. So, that's all exciting news for our seniors. Thank you, Emma. Okay, the next thing, I'm going to ask Betty Taylor to come. They have requested, it's just a small grading change that we'll discuss tonight. If you have other questions around grading, we can bring that back when we're talking about course selection and also the policy handbook. But tonight's is one small change that they would like to make for a second semester, and I'm going to let Mrs. Taylor talk to you about that. I do have it on the screen as well.
Yes. And basically, what, everything that's in black is what is currently in the student handbook, and what I've put in, is it purple or blue?
Purple.
Yeah, purple, is the change. If you read carefully, it actually is the change that occurs in the first sentence. Well, excuse me, the first and second sentence. Any assignment or average that calculates to a 50 or below will be signed a 50 in Aspen. I added, we added average as well. So, if a student gets a quiz or test score and it's a 43, the teacher puts it in Aspen as a 50. And if the student's final grade averages to, God forbid, a 43, it's put in as a 50 as part of the average. But the real change is any assignment that is not completed by the end of a quarter is assigned a zero. Previously, we had that as a 50. And my recommendation, after speaking to staff, is that if students do not turn in work, we need to make sure that those are, they're indicated as no credit and as a zero. So that's the change we're asking for. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Mrs. Taylor, can you explain a little bit about the reasoning, what the teachers were finding, and why they asked for this?
Well, when we would take, you know, we are using standards-based grading, which first means that students are assessed according to their proficiency to the standards. And part of the elements of standards-based grading is that students get an opportunity to practice, which is a series of formatives, and then at some point, there's a summative, where are you right now and do you have the proficiency skills? And one of the other premises that we were trying to do, aside from adjusting our scale, instead of doing 0 to 100, 50 to 100, is because, well, first of all, the premise that you have multiple opportunities to fail, 0 to 50, and only, like, 10 slots to get an A or a B. But we also wanted not, we didn't want the practice of students who are not doing well at the beginning of the year to quit, because they run the numbers and they don't see how they can pass for the year, especially if their average is below 50. So when we do a 50, there's still plenty of opportunity to bring that up. The thinking with the not giving zeros for some of the formative grades was that the teachers and the students would work together to get that done. In other words, that zero would be unacceptable, and therefore, a student would work to get the work done, especially when they had the opportunity for redos. But, and we were working on that, and we sort of, to mixed results. But during COVID, when we had to give students multiple opportunities to do things, we also were concerned about the regular practice. So we think the formatives are valuable, and our assessments are valuable, and students opting not to do them does not reinforce what we're trying to do in standards-based practice, which is you need to know the standard, you need to learn the skills. So, we feel that if the students understand that there is a more significant impact if they choose not to do it, we'll get more practice. We had, we had some examples, not all students, but of students calculating the minimum grade, the minimum they could do, and for them, having, getting a 50 for not doing anything was one of their calculations. And we'd like to remove that possibility, so they understand that the importance of the practice itself and the assessment itself.
So if I'm a student that is taking advantage of being able to redo work or submit it, I'm going to still get the 50. But this is really targeted at the student that doesn't...
Does not submit anything at all.
Okay. Abel?
Yeah, so I'm new to the whole high school experience, and I certainly have attended parent conference nights and after-school parent evenings. And I understand that formatives have the opportunity for students to redo their work up until the point of the summative. And I am a very strong proponent for student accountability, to make sure that they're responsible for their own work and turning it in. I do wonder if this change would benefit students who need extra support from teachers on understanding what perhaps they hadn't completed, or hadn't understood about an assignment or a deadline, so that they would have an opportunity on these formatives to bring up that 50 before the summative.
Well, that, that may, that, they probably would, because if, right now, if you got a 70 on a formative, depending on the teacher's timeline for, you can redo that as well. So certainly, a student that got a 50 on a formative would have an opportunity to retake.
Okay. I'm just wondering, is 50 just sort of like a give me, or they really would have an opportunity in the, you know, often just few days between the formative redos and the summative to bring that 50 up? It seems like a 50 still, even though it's more generous than a zero?
Yeah.
Is, is feeling a little bit punitive, and I just wonder about the accountability on both sides.
Well, yes, I understand that. I'm not sure if it's punitive if we have no evidence of student work. Well, and when we have evidence of student work, such as a 50, then, from the whole scale, students have the opportunity to redo. Now, teachers set up different parameters as far as timelines, like you were talking about, or sometimes teachers allow students to just take part of a formative. In other words, the ones they already got correct, they remain the same, and they're asked to retake sections. So that varies in that way. But I don't think there's a disadvantage as far as the opportunity to redo for a student who gets a 50 over a student who got a 75 on the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Silva?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand that. This, this point about if an assignment has not been completed by the end of the quarter, it's assigned a zero. If they make an effort to, to complete that and don't do well?
That gets graded.
And get a 10, they would get bumped up to a 50?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one question. This is for second semester, so is this only impacting second semester courses, or will it also impact grading for full-year courses?
It will impact grading for full year and second semester courses.
But only grading that?
It will not change first and second quarter grades.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
In fact, we, we made sure that Aspen, we've set parameters, so that won't happen.
Will only change third and fourth quarter.
It will not go back to what's already been graded.
Okay.
Can I ask in general, in terms of the way that this, this type of grading is done in the high school, whether or not, based on historic data of the traditional way that grading was done, does this force kids to lower expectations, this type of grading system, because they know that they, they can, they don't have that one time to take the test? They don't have that, you know, that day of the test to understand the content? And knowing that forces them to stay on a schedule, understand the content, and be prepared on the day of the test?
Yeah. Let me distinguish. They have the opportunity to retake and redo formatives, which I think, instead of using a sports metaphor, I'm going to use a theater metaphor. Rehearsals, the rehearsals, you practice, you run through the lines, you go through the scenes, those are formatives. You get correct feedback from the director. At one point, sooner or later, it's time for the show. That's the summative. And so, the formatives are the practice that we think is necessary to get better. And then the summatives are the test, the final culmination to demonstrate what you know. So summatives, I do let teachers make a determination if they want to allow retakes on summatives. And I don't think too many of my teachers do that, but I let them make that choice individually. But the only thing that's, that's consistent throughout the school is kids have an opportunity to retake the practice, the formative. But the summative comes sooner or later, anyway.
But if I take the summative and don't do well, I can't get lower than a 50?
That's correct. That's true for any grade.
But if I don't take it at all, then I'll get a zero.
That would be a zero. And that's, and remember, the language is "at the end of the quarter." So, we leave it open up until the very last moment for an opportunity to make up the work.
So I think in some ways, this is an attempt to try to raise the bar of expectation, because what we were finding are, there were some kids that weren't doing it at all, because they would figure the average, and with a 50, they could get enough to just get them over into passing, and that was good enough. And now that won't be the case.
Yeah, we're concerned about the good, good enough students, or I'll take the D.
Yeah.
And this is how I'll get it. That's what, that's what teachers are reporting to me, is people calculating this.
Wow.
Mrs. Abel?
So I think the clarity that I'm looking for is a student that, who mistakenly turns in an assignment a day or two late, are they automatically just given a 50 with no feedback, with no opportunity to do more work before the summative, or are they just basically given this 50 as a give me? Like, that, that's the...
Well, I can't speak to the exact calendar, but my understanding of practice that I've seen is that kids still have the opportunity to retake, no matter what the assignment is. And let's say, let's say a student turns in something late. As I said, lots of times the teachers, and let's say the next day is the form, the summative, okay? So I think teachers have done different things in that they eyeball it right then and there and give the students some feedback about what, the section that you got wrong. They will allow them to retake, but they would also get feedback to be ready for the summative. Now, you know, I don't, I'm sure that instance happens. I don't think it happens as regularly as you think, because I think there's a little gap in time between the last formative and the summative. Hopefully, not a long gap in time. But I don't think they're, you know, formative, and the next day's the summative. I'm pretty sure that's not how it consistently works.
I guess my concern is, I don't want this change to just mean that the teacher just says, well, you got a 50. Like, I guess that's my feeling.
No, it's, it's open till the end of the quarter.
Till the end of the quarter.
And so, a teacher can't...
Until the summative.
Pardon me?
Until the summative on, like, a certain...
No, till the end of the quarter.
Till the end of the quarter. Yeah. Okay.
Just a, just a comment. I think it's also important, you know, I agree with your, the policy that, you know, if you don't do the work, you don't, you don't get the credit. But I think it's also important to think about making sure that the formatives are given constructive feedback, and that they're graded in a timely, in a timely manner, so that, you know...
Students can benefit from it.
So that students can benefit from it.
You know, we have an agreement with BTA that is in our handbook, that when teachers are supposed to be posting grades on Aspen, they have a time span as well. So, that should be happening. And if it isn't, that's something that, that we should discuss with the teacher. Because yes, both the student and the parents need to know where the student stands and the opportunity to redo in a timely manner.
In the, like, do you have another question? And can we, is there a motion to approve the?
I didn't realize we were voting on this.
Yeah, I'm asking for a change for second quarter.
And it changes the handbook?
I mean, excuse me, second semester.
So I think because school committee approves the handbook and the program studies, then if we're going to change that, we need to get approval from the committee for that.
I would make a motion to make this change with the explicit understanding that teachers are informed of the intentionality of this change, to make sure that students have the opportunity for learning and growth within the subject content areas.
Yes. Can I just add to that, that students are also made aware of the change?
Well, I've already spoken to the faculty, and as soon as, if, when we had the approval, I was intending to communicate out to students and families.
So, I'm making that conditional motion to approve this change.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions on the motion? Mrs. Abel, can you call a rule?
Sure. I'm going to start with the school committee members, just because that's the order. I've written it in. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Kate Twombly?
Yes.
And our students, Jayden?
They're excused.
Oh, they, students, those for homework. I, and Emma, Emma also.
I'm here. Be interested.
And Cameron might be, I don't know.
We spoke to one.
Okay, and Cameron?
Yes.
Zina?
Yes.
And Annabelle?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is...
Yes, you did.
Yes, okay, yes, I thought, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I'm going to ask Mrs. Taylor to stay there and introduce.
I'm not going to be staying there too long. Thank you for inviting us. I started on the slide presentation with our vision of the graduate. And I'm hopefully not going to do too much talking. That's why I brought my administrative team with me. A couple of things I did want to sort of stress, we're looking for vision of the graduate.
Hold on, we're having a little...
Are you reading your emails yet?
No, I'm not. Those are just open. I need to move this back.
Well, while we're finding that, just a couple of points I want to make, that, you know, what we've really been working on in reaching these goals for our graduates is two things in particular this year. And this has been a long-term goal of Beverly High School, is to provide as many opportunities as possible for our students to develop their skills, to learn new things, to explore their talents. for our students to develop their skills, to learn new things, to, to explore their talents and to show their leadership. So opportunity is a big piece, but the other piece is expectations and challenging students to do their best work. And so I'm going to have different members of my administrative team come up and talk today. But I, one of the things I want to stress is that each person that's presenting a different aspect, I have my, my administrative team, all people own different pieces of it. So when somebody comes up and does a presentation, they're speaking for all of us. We, I think we're a very good team. We work well together. And we work well together too because we have a, a strong faculty that is interested in, in ideas, interested in improving and cares and likes the kids. And so I think what I'm trying to show to you is we have a lot going on at Beverly High School and we're proud of what we have going on at Beverly High School. So I'll start first with our curriculum directors. Is one going before the other? Well, okay, so Dr. Jennifer Thomas, who's our STEM director, and Mr. Paul Casey, who's our humanities director.
We thought we'd start by just highlighting some of the work that we both do on a regular basis. So we're constantly assessing our current curriculum and resources. We're, we always evaluate and been selecting new resources. We lead implementation, monitor progress and discuss best practices in small content-based teams. And we ensure vertical curricular coherence. We did select a quote from, an article from DESI of why curriculum matters. And it states, "Curricular materials can make a real difference. Providing teachers with access to higher quality, better aligned curricular matter, materials can prompt improvement in student outcomes comparable to over half a year of additional learning, about one and a half times the difference in average teacher and one at the 75th percentile, and greater than the difference between a new teacher and one with three years of experience." So Dr. Thomas will go over some recent math and science highlights.
So for math, some highlights, we're in year two of adoption of our new curriculum, which is from McGraw-Hill with Reveal and Alex. And that was for our Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II courses. And we've come up with a great scope and sequence. The teachers worked really hard over the summer to get that and they are implementing that right now. And we actually shared this sequence with the middle school. So the students at the middle school who are taking Algebra I are getting the same scope and sequence and materials and some of the same assessments that they're getting at the high school. We're working hard to implement common assessments across the board for all of our units in these three content areas. So that the team of teachers during our curriculum time are coming up with the, or using the assessments from the materials, but using it in a collaborative way and talking about what best practices are to make sure that our kids are meeting those standards. And we're also in year one of a new resource for pre-calculus and calculus courses. So we're really working on that whole vertical alignment from Algebra I all the way up to calculus. And we've redesigned our benchmarks this year. We have common midterms and finals. So all that's going on in the math department. And we did receive a grant from the Institution of Savings for some graphing calculators. So our teachers are really working hard to make sure our kids can utilize the technology to help them with their math skills. In science, this is our curriculum research year. So we are busy right now researching what curriculum materials we can invest in to better support our students in learning these standards. We're updating our curriculum maps to align to these standards and then helping us, while we're doing that to pick these new resources. And just like in math, we've implemented benchmark assessments and common assessments. And we've received a grant from Cell Signaling, which is over in Danvers, to help us purchase some probes for our biology courses. They also came to the high school during STEM week and did a career presentation, which was great. They brought over a lot of, I should say a lot for, I think, different career professionals to talk about careers at Cell Signaling. Our engineering students just came back from a field trip from Trillium Flow Technologies and Ipswitch. And I believe they took the electric bus there, which was great. And we have another guest speaker coming in to talk to our students from Clock Tower Engineering coming up. So we're really outreach to local companies and trying to share some career information with our students in math and science.
So in history, we're in our third year of using TCI History Alive as our main resource, which I was very proud to stand here three years ago, or virtually three years ago, advocating for, as a teacher at that point, which has its, our teachers have really started to use it to encourage student-centered learning activities and increase engagement. We are just next week, starting our collaboration with Beverly Middle School on the civics project to enhance that across grade levels. We know our eighth grade teachers have done an excellent job with the civics project. And we're going to use their expertise to bring that up into the high school and enhance it. Just this past week, we were able to secure DESI's genocide grant to increase professional development opportunities. We've actually partnered with Salem State's genocide and Holocaust Studies School and also facing history to bring professional development to teachers as well as new resources to students. As, just as Dr. Thomas said, in history, we've implemented benchmarks and common assessments. And we've also added two new AP courses this year, AP Human Geography and AP Psychology, which have had some really great enrollment. For English, we have continued with diversifying our current texts to bring more student voice and representation within our literature. We currently have six teachers piloting eight new titles. We're just about at the end of that pilot phase. And those teachers have been working diligently to update curriculum maps to match the new titles and bring those to their colleagues. In addition, we've been in the process and are moving very quickly implementing new common writing and research strategies to align vertically with grade levels using similar academic or common academic language. And as well as history, we've redesigned and implemented new benchmarks.
And Mr. Casey, can you talk about how we're going to gather student input from some of the new titles that we're looking at?
Oh, sure, yes. So for all of the new titles, we have students filling out surveys for each individual teacher on, you know, their thoughts on the, on the text, you know, what, how they thought it went and, you know, basically just their input on it.
And just as a, kind of to whet your whistle for a future kind of release, I challenged both of our directors here to come up with user-friendly parent documents around curriculum resources so that they know what students are learning, how they can support their students as they're going through, to update what we have on our website. And within about seven or eight weeks, they have drafts done and they were going to get some feedback from their staff today. And so we'll be unveiling those in the not-too-distant future. So these guys have done some wonderful work this year, so thank you. Any questions for our curriculum directors before we move on to the next?
Can I just make a comment? So, and I just really think it's really important to make this comment. I don't know, we have spent the, especially under Dr. Flaherty's guidance in terms of curriculum, really working extremely hard to figure out how to make sure that we, that, that curriculum was raised up and lifted up within the district, looking at new materials, looking at new opportunities. And between Jennifer and Paul, we are very, very fortunate to have invested in real curriculum work. And for Dot in particular, I think the first year here with, with no curriculum directors at the high school and not really that opportunity to dig as deeply in as we would have liked, this has been, you know, a total shift in, in how we do business. And so I want to thank both of you. The work that you're doing is really awesome. And I know that Dot is very, very, very happy to have, to have the work alive and, and living on a daily basis. So thank you for that. I just wanted to share that.
Mrs. Robinson?
Thank you. I just wanted to also say that I think it's important to provide the money that is necessary to, you know, you said you adopted six new, six new texts in English?
Eight.
Eight new texts in English, so the, then all the new stuff, it's going to be old in a, in a few years. So I think it's important that we don't just keep this now, but keep it going in the future.
Yeah, I can say that this is definitely one of our benefits from ESAR money and that we really have tried to target that, those fundings to improve curriculum and instruction and support for students. And I think that updating our curriculum materials, some of which in science were 18, 19, 20 years old. Mrs. Abell?
Just to piggyback on that, that thought, as we adopt some of the piloted materials, I would like to see that we have enough copies for all students to be able to take them home from the classroom, to be able to complete their assignments with actual texts rather than scanned copies or memory or vague ideas of what they talked about in class. I think it's really important for students to actually have physical text to be able to do the work.
I would second that, for sure.
And I think I just wanted to add one, one point to the, and 100% of the credit goes to Dot for this one. The curriculum cycle, the curriculum review cycle is something that I have watched her over the last four years put in place and we, and, and we've maintained it with fidelity. So that, and it has taken, I think, the last four years for us to catch up. And we still have a couple, it's a six-year cycle, right? So we still have a couple more years of looking at certain areas. But that was something that in Beverly, we were not adhering to in a, in a really good way, partially because there may not have been the resources to replace. So this ESAR funding that came along, I would, I think if I just take a rough estimate, we've already spent about 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars in upgrading resources from K to, K to 12 in our district. And that money wasn't, that was something that in years when we didn't have money, I, I think that was one of the things. But the, the manner in which she's implemented the review cycle and engaged teacher teams and people at all of the building levels has really set Beverly on a path so that we're not going to have 20-year-old, hopefully, we're not going to, I mean, some texts are going to be 20 years old and we'll renew them when we can. But, you know, making sure that we're looking and aligning and, and taking a look at the resources that we have and that's something that's been a real benefit for us.
I mean, there are some classics. I did see my high school textbook in my freshman class, or my freshman student's classroom, and it was the same cover.
Yeah. So, so, but this process is what we've been working through, right? And that's the, that's been the whole, the whole idea. And we, we took it on full force about three years ago. I think we came forward to curriculum and instruction and introduced the idea that we were entering into this review cycle and we outlined which content areas would be going. So when you were listening tonight, you were hearing that, you know, we're in the first year of this one and we're in the second year of this one and we're in the third year of this one because those were the years in which that cycle review began. And so, you know, I just, I think it's a, a real positive step for us as we kind of move forward.
And while I could sit and talk about curriculum all night, we do have a lot of other things on the presentation to cover. So I'd like to ask Julie to come up to talk about the guidance department.
Thank you so much, everybody. I'm very grateful to be here tonight and have the opportunity to talk about our guidance programming. And I feel like I'm going to have a heart attack because to put all this into five minutes is really challenging for me. So I'm going to try to keep my colleagues in mind and go quickly. So what I added here was that we are really focusing on communication this year and trying to get all of the events and the programming that we're taking part in and having our students take part in be available to parents and guardians and community members. So we created a guidance website. You don't have to go there, Dot. But we did create a guidance website with several pages and we're continuously adding to it. And we have a weekly blog that goes out every week via email to parents, guardians and students. So that's just to keep everyone up to date. I have a infographic here, how we like to look at our guidance curriculum in three phases. It's a continuum, college and career readiness continuum. So we actually start with the seventh grade really looking at this. So grades seven through nine are in the college and career awareness phase. And then we move into the exploration phase, and that's for students in grades nine through 11. And then into the college and career immersion phase for students in grades 10 through 12. So all of our programming, our lessons, our classroom visits with students, the activities that they partake in, all fall along this continuum. So for tonight, I, I'm just highlighting some of our immersion, college and career immersion programs that we have going on at the high school right now. So that's at the high level. That's where students are actually immersed, either in taking college courses or they're out there in the community and experiencing what it's like to be immersed in a career. So for this slide, we have launched our five BHS career pathways. We have allied health, business and marketing, education, environmental science and hospitality. And this is our first year with students designated in these pathways. And these students, if you look at the left-hand side of the screen, is the class of 2025. So these are all sophomores. And at this point in the game, they are just focused on the coursework that we offer at Beverly High that aligns with these pathways. But down the road, we're hoping to fold in shadowing opportunities, mentoring opportunities, certifications that they can take so that when they graduate, they have a certification in that field as well as aligning their REACH senior internship experience with their pathway. And then on the right-hand side, I added the data of the students that are currently in the class of 2026. So myself and Brian Rivera, the ninth grade guidance counselor, visited the My Future Career Success classes, the first semester classes. And we taught them about the pathways and we surveyed them to see if they were interested. And you can see an increase there in the interest for students to partake in these pathways. So that was kind of exciting. And I'm, and I'm not sure if it's because they have been actually working in eighth grade as well on career readiness. So they're understanding a little bit more about where they want to go and where their passions are and their skills lie. Or if our presentation was so exciting that they felt as though they had to jump into one of these pathways.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Is, is there mobility in these pathways where, you know, a freshman decides they want to be in, you know, this pathway and then come junior year?
Absolutely.
They change their mind?
Absolutely. That's a great question. There is definitely mobility as long as there's the opportunity for them to get the courses in that are required to complete that pathway. So as long as they can get that in, in 10th or 11th or 12th grade, they can switch. So they are required to take 20 credits of elective courses and core courses in each pathway.
So is that, is that mapped out so that they know?
It's mapped out, yes.
When they're a junior, they, they know sort of what...
Yes, yes. We have flow sheets for that. And Megan Sudak worked with me last year and we designed those and developed those. So yes, there is absolute flexibility and they're not required, but we do have them available. And then the last slide here are just some other opportunities that we have for college and career immersion. We have a dual enrollment partnership with several schools. So with North Shore Community College, right now we have an EMT training course. We have 15 seniors taking this course. It's a year-long course. They can take the certification at the end and they, and the certification exam is actually like in June and they can be working in the summertime as an EMT. So it's fantastic. We also have a course called Career Pathways in Higher Education that's starting spring semester at Beverly High on our campus in the afternoon. And with Endicott, we have a partnership. They, their staff is coming to teach two nights a week. One class is called Communications and Business, the other is Culture and Identity. And we also have partnerships with Salem State and Montserrat and Communication on offering some dual enrollment opportunities to students. We also have the BHS YMCA Education Pathway Program. And I don't know if Lorigan's on this meeting tonight, but Lorigan has been amazing. She's who I work with over at the YMCA. We have six seniors currently during senior privilege going over there and at all the individual elementary schools and working because they want to have a field, work in the field of education, either with little ones or older students. So that's been fantastic. We have our REACH Senior Internship Program. That's four weeks at the end of senior year. Seniors can choose either a site internship or a project that's immersed in their career field. And then we have our Essex Tech After Dark Program, which we are on, I believe, our third year. That's a fantastic partnership where students spend half the day at Beverly High taking their core classes. And then they go over to Essex Tech and are immersed in their shop. So they're learning their skills, they're earning their 900 hours of skills work in that field so that they can go out into the field when they graduate. And tonight, I actually have two of our illustrious Essex Tech After Dark Program students. So I'd love to call them up for a minute and just have them introduce themselves and tell you what shop they're in. Ibrahim and Darmin, if you'd come up. We don't have a long time, so we have to be quick. So if you want to just state your name and what shop you're in and if it connects to a career and maybe what skills you're learning right now. Ibrahim, you want to go ahead?
My name is Ibrahim and my shop, I'm in advanced manufacturing. I would like to say I'm extremely, I feel extremely lucky and proud that I go to Beverly High School and Essex Tech at the same time. And I think Beverly High School is such an amazing and a unique place because... because it is operated and run by the right people. And like Mrs. Taylor and Mr. Kudair and Mr. Wood, I can't stay here until tomorrow. Like mentioning how amazing and awesome the teacher in Beverly High. And I think the opportunity that I have like in, in the After Dark Program introduced me to a lot of new people and allowed me to think about new opportunities and career fields that I never thought before and absolutely improved in my career life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. My name is Darmin. I do craft labor, construction craft labor at the SS Tech. I actually am proud that I go to BHS because they're the most trusting people I can trust. I trust Mr. Gorder, I trust Ms. Farah. Sorry. And I trust mostly all the teachers that I go there for. They're easier to talk to, they're easy to talk to when I need to catch up on work, when I need to have help with my work. And they do help with like certain learning disabilities I usually have, like reading and all. And what's amazing is that they don't get frustrated with any one of us. They take their times and they're very patient with us. And I'm just very lucky that I go to BHS.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Do you have a question?
Just have one quick question. With regard to the After Dark, are all the schools, are all the, are all, are all the schools open to After Dark program? Or is there a select number?
Yeah, I think there's a select number.
Select number.
And, and they were at the high-
It changes from year to year.
They were actually at the high school today presenting to the entire sophomore class about the opportunity and the application process. So sophomores currently right now are able to apply for junior and senior year.
Is the intention to broaden it so that they, there are more or is it just a fixed?
So the, the program is premised on the idea that there was availability for some, in, in some programming at Essex Tech, which is how they were able to bring for the, you know, the afternoon park. So because they have to do 900 hours in a shop, there has to be the availability of the shop at Essex Tech as well as an instructor in that area. And so a lot of it depends after they've done their selections for the students that are full-time enrolled. Then they're, they have some spaces that are open in certain programs and they open those up.
Thank you. Thank you.
I had two quick questions on dual enrollment. Is there any cost to the student or their families for the dual enrollment courses?
That's a great question. No, for North Shore Community College, Endicott College and for Salem State, it's all free for students.
And is there any enrollment commitment for our district to enable the classes to actually occur? And do we have any challenges filling those classes? Because I realize it's a, an evening commitment for our students that are already busy.
It's tough. It, it requires a lot of recruitment and advertising and reaching out to students because yes, the afternoons are difficult. So like the EMT course is going on during the day. We actually have that during D Block and seniors typically have senior privilege. So that's worked out great and we haven't had any trouble filling that. But that's a great question. Yes.
Thank you.
As we're switching speakers, I just want to thank the committee because this was a new position, College Director of College and Career Readiness several years ago. And Julie has just taken the guidance department and moved it to a whole new level in that time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I feel very blessed. Thank you.
And I was going to say that, but you gave me a dirty look for talking too much.
So we only have seven minutes left. We're going to run out.
Guarantee I'll be short of one of the-
All right.
Mr. Thomas is going to tell us about student support programs.
So from, let me just get to that. So I'm going to highlight a couple different student support programs. And by nature, a lot of times these, these go with a whole lot, without a whole lot of fanfare. So it's a great opportunity tonight to really put a spotlight on them. The first one I'm going to talk about is the Beacon Program. And that's, that's similar to what's, what you, you talked about in a lot of schools as of the Bright Program. It's, that's used across many school districts. We've kind of formed our own here. And really what it is, is a short-term re-entry or transition back after hospitalization for a mental health issue or a medical issue. And the, the idea behind that is to really have a soft landing spot where students can kind of get their legs back under them, catch up on some academics, get some emotional support. It's staffed by a teacher and a school adjustment counselor every day. And, you know, the, the average, the average stay varies, but give or take, we try to utilize about two weeks and transition students back. And sometimes that looks, students finish there and they might go back right away to all their classes. Other students might transition a little more slowly, but that, it's really case dependent. Talking about our school adjustment counselors, that's really been beefed up over the last couple of years here. Way back when, when I was an adjustment counselor, there were two of us in the building. And not, not too, that was not too long ago. But now we're up to three full-time and two part-time that all students can access. And that's including one that's dedicated to the ninth grade specifically. There's also two additional adjustment counselors that are embedded into specialized program. One about, one in the Beacon Program, which I spoke about, and then one in the Ladders Three, which are, was our social emotional program. And then we also have an added outreach worker who's a school adjustment counselor by license. And he does a lot of work helping students transition into school that might have attendance issues for a variety of reasons. And, and he's been awesome. He's doing a ton of home visits, really working that transition in. He's, you know, texting kids, you know, at early in the morning to get them going and, and working with the parents and, and he's developed awesome relationships with people. He's also really a solid liaison for us to the courts as well. So a lot of legwork by our outreach counselor, Mr. Ritos. As far as wellness screenings, those, those look a couple of different ways here. The first one I'll talk about is ESPERT, which is a screening, brief intervention and referral to treatment. That's something where students sit down with one of our counseling staff, go through a prescribed screening. And really what it is, is helping students identify if they need more support around social emotional issues. The Youth at Risk Survey, I think we're all familiar with, that's been in place for a long time. And, and the big piece of that is it really helps us shape what we do as far as supporting our students because it gives us really kind of year-by-year recent trends as to risky behaviors that might be going on or, or issues that students are facing. The Signs of Suicide Presentation or SOS, that's our adjustment counselors go into the wellness classes and work with students around identifying depressive symptoms and other potential mental health issues and how to support someone if they, if they do see someone struggling with that. So that's, that's gone on for a number of years as well. Two other pieces I'd like to talk about, one, one's been in place for quite a while, but is really going strong. And the other is fairly new. The Freshman Academy has been in place for quite a number of years. And that's, that's really, the, the big emphasis on that is personalization and assistance with transition from the middle school into high school. And that's, four teams are composed of four teachers, the, of the core subjects, math, science, history and English. A couple of key tenants there, they, they have weekly meetings with, with myself or the assistant principal in charge of it, school adjustment counselor and the guidance counselor. I'd note that the adjustment counselor and the guidance counselor are both dedicated to the ninth grade. So they, that's their caseload and, and they, they work with just primarily that ninth grade group. The teachers on each team, they also have common planning time and regular meetings with our curriculum directors. So we can say streamlined and really kind of stay on the same page across all four teams. The sophomore teams are fairly new. We, we kind of thought of it as almost a scaffold here where it's a little less structured than maybe the freshman academy, but same kind of idea of giving that support to the sophomores. It's, it's a little more loose in a sense that sophomores are starting to get into their different class pathways and, and taking some different classes. So it's not as closed as the freshman academy teams. But there's two, there's two teams composed of two teachers from each core subject. And I could get into the nitty-gritty, but, you know, that, there's, as far as how that's set up. But the, the big thing is they're, they're talking about students and talking about how to help students be successful. And, and that, that's the biggest thing that we, we get out of both of these groups. The, the other key piece of the sophomore teams that was, and this was added in this year, is the City Connects Program, which I know we've talked a lot about and is, has been a really welcome addition.
For both the freshman and sophomore, do you have student ambassadors?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Do you have, for both the freshman and the sophomore programs, do you have student ambassadors and that, that can serve to also help? Is that appropriate or is that, do you think that would be helpful?
So for example, a lot of what, when I, when I meet with the freshman academy teams, really we're talking about students, talking about students that are doing well, talking about students that might need some support.
Okay.
And, and a lot of times we're doing like parent meetings and that type of thing. So it's a little, it's a little different than having a representative.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Robinson, we have four slides left, two areas, which probably be about five or six minutes. I don't know how you want to proceed. I think Mr. Wood is presenting our academic programs.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to talk about a couple academic programs, one being our EL program. I can talk loud, it's fine. Sure. So our EL program-
Beverly High students being-
That's all right. That's all right. I'm groomed. Our EL program consists of 47 students. It's staffed with a guidance counselor, a assistant principal that are all exclusive to that particular program. This year we were able to utilize translation service, which has enhanced and been very helpful for obviously communication between staff, students and also parents as well. For our special ed education programs, our accomplished program, which you'll see the photo at the bottom, which took place last week between a very fierce competition between our accomplished kids and some of the Beverly police. So I don't have the results and I'm not sure if I'm at liberty to make that public. Our accomplished program is basically our life skills class for students, you know, 14 to 18. And that consists of two teachers, four paraprofessionals and a assistant principal that's exclusive to that program. Our launch program is a post-secondary life skills training program, which we have included a new transitions specialist, which will help with job skills and community outreach. And then lastly, our Ladders Three program, which is our therapeutic program, which consists of four teachers, three paraprofessionals, a adjustment counselor, assistant principal and a guidance counselor exclusive to that program. This is a program that I oversee. I took it over from Mr. Thomas two years ago and we were fortunate to have a great opportunity to work with Project Adventure. And we started that last year and enhanced the program quite a bit. Also, it's included a lot of aspects in regards to, you know, what the students need for just SEL stuff, team building and health and wellness as well. So.
And 32 co-taught teams happening throughout the school.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And last but certainly not least, Mr. Kudair is going to talk about one of the most important parts is student life.
Absolutely. So I am here to kind of close things out with our high school presentation. So we have, first thing I want to talk about is our extracurricular clubs. We have 41 in total at BHS and we keep on growing. As you'll see, we have new additions this year and these are just to name a few. The Albanian Club, the Alliance for Students of Color, the Astronomy Club, the Mentor Club and the Red Cross Club. We also have been lucky enough to have so many students involved in drama. Our Stage, Stage Right has led and already had in the beginning of December, our She Kills Monsters, their incredible play that they performed, as well as they will be hosting Drama Fest this year where they will be doing their spoof of Game of Thrones called Game of Tiaras. And they will be hosting seven other schools as well. Yeah. And then obviously we look forward to in the spring, our school musical, this year it will be Funny Girl. For athletics, we have athletics, we have, in the 2021, 2022 season, we had 891 students participate. And then this season, we already have 643 students participating. That's without the spring season. So we're well on our way to have much higher participation this year. Our ROTC program has 36 students currently enrolled in it. We are prestigious enough to be named a naval honor school, which is great. And our marksmanship team for the ROTC program finished first place in the New England region. And what I was told was they were in the top third in the entire nation. So very good. Okay? And then to talk about what we have with the climate committee. Our climate committee is a great group of teachers and also students. I tried to get some of them to join me tonight, but believe it or not, they're so involved and I couldn't get any of them here.
There's a big game tonight, too.
And there's a big game going on, so we're talking about student life. There's a lot of students over at the gym right now for the Lawrence basketball game. So the climate committee helps choose our students and teachers of the month. The students of the month have been going on for quite a few years now, which is nominations made by teachers for students each month. And really what we're looking for as a committee is not our students that are best and brightest, but our students that are doing stuff that we don't know that they're doing. So that unsung hero, that, that little thing that the teacher notices. For instance, you have Yanzi up there. He's the, the young man that's always opening the door for everyone. And I can't tell you how many teachers have come up to me, has Yanzi got student of the month? I want to make sure he gets that. So he is a fantastic example of what we're looking for for that. And then the teachers, my job is to kind of culminate through all of the nominations that we have and put it all together for our meetings, which we're having our next meeting tomorrow. And I'm telling you, it's the best part of the job, seeing all the incredible things that our teachers are saying about our students and also our students are saying about our teachers. It's great. And then we set up nice, fun things like the ugly sweater contest, the Halloween costume contest. And then we had incredible participation on our letters of gratitude this year. And that's all because of the students at our school.
I think it's, it's appropriate that you end.
Yep.
Students that are involved in athletics and activities at the high-
There you go.
I just have a quick question. Not that you have to provide the answer now, but I'm curious to know, if you look at the students that are either in sports or clubs, what fraction of students are not in either of, of those types of extracurricular activities?
Yeah. That, I, we would hope that that's very minimal, but yeah, it would be an interesting thing to dive deeper into that data.
That's not students that aren't involved in anything at the high school. That'd be good to look at.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for, well, I think it's a very busy and big place and there's a lot of things happening in Beverly High School. So the fact that they were able to cram that into about 35 minutes is remarkable in and of itself. But I think that gave you a really good overview of all of the good things that are happening at Beverly High. So at this point, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And I'll call the roll. Quickly, the school committee members, Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Myself, Rachel Abel, yes. Kate Twombly?
Yes.
Our students, Emma Judge? Yes. Online, we have Cameron Pisano?
Yes.
And Annabelle Miller?
Yes.
And I believe that's, oh, Zina, you're still on? Zinab?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the indulgence of a little extra time.
Allison Prossy, Salem News All-Stars NEC All-Conference Team. Mary Hawke, Salem News All-Star NEC All-Conference Team. Tara McNeil, Salem News All-Stars NEC All-Conference Team. Calvin Barrett, NEC Dunn All-Stars. Emma Judge, NEC Dunn All-Stars. Now we'll move on to soccer. Wilson DeLeon, Salem News All-Stars NEC All-Conference Team. Ian Visnick, Salem News All-Stars NEC All-Conference Team and All-State. I don't think Ian's here. Isabella Sullivan, Salem News All-Stars NEC Dunn All-Stars. Grace Fitzgerald, Salem News All-Stars NEC All-Conference Team. Grace Gonzalez, NEC Dunn All-Stars. Trevor Gilligan, NEC Dunn All-Stars. Matt Roy, NEC Dunn All-Stars. Next we'll move on to field hockey. Brooke Davies, Salem News All-Stars NEC North All-Stars. Noel McLean, Salem News All-Stars. Ella Malablocki, NEC All-Conference Team. We'll move on to volleyball. Maya Perrin, Salem News All-Stars NEC All-Conference Team. Natalie Reynolds, Salem News All-Stars NEC All-Conference Team. Nikki Aracola, NEC All-Stars. Abby Ruggieri, NEC All-Stars. Our golf team. Aiden LeBlanc, Salem News All-Stars Golfer of the Year NEC All-Conference. Ian Paddock, Salem News All-Stars NEC All-Conference. Will Ryan, Salem News All-Stars. Jack Ryan, NEC All-Stars. Dylan Hunter, NEC All-Stars. And Ryan Avila, NEC All-Stars. They must be golfing somewhere. And for football. Matthew Sopp, Salem News All-Stars NEC All-Conference Team. Benjamin Herring, NEC All-Conference Team. Logan Petrasino, NEC North All-Stars. And Jacob Plackens, NEC North All-Stars. And we should also note Coach of the Year for Girls Cross Country, David Jellison. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. We're very proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again to all our student athletes and for their supports who have brought you here tonight and have supported you along the way. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thanks. Well, thank you, everyone. It's so exciting to talk to the students and their families and hear about what's next and all of the exciting things going on. So thank you all for making time to join us this evening. The next most exciting part of our agenda tonight is to hear from our student representative, Kaylee Quintino.
So so far in the month of January, we do have midterms coming up, which a bunch of teachers are preparing for, like creating study guides, just finishing up units so they can start covering the midterm, which is the final week of January. Student Council is also hosting their first Winter Bash, which will be on January 20th. We are trying to sell as many tickets as we can. So the more people go, the more money we'll raise, which will be divided between all four classes, and it's open to all grades. End of our college courses have actually opened, starting like between like spring, I'd say, or like winter, or ending in spring, I believe. And recently, we just started talking about DECA. There was the competition for districts this past Monday on January 9th. I think it was 85 students from Beverly High School who are moving on to state, which is very exciting, yes. And we do have a basketball game today, and just talking about sports against Lawrence for the boys and girls. Boys are home and girls are away. Should be an exciting game tonight. And juniors and seniors have started begin, like beginning to shop for dress, like prom dresses, and it's like a little thing to start thinking of. And of course, we have no school on Monday because of MLK Day. So that's just a bit of rundown for January at high school.
Thank you so much. And I think I just saw an invitation from our committee. The Human Rights Committee, right, for Monday. So there'll be an opportunity for people to gather here at the middle school in person again. So thank you so much. As always, I know you're studying for midterms. I know you have lots of homework, and I appreciate your time for being with us. You're welcome to excuse yourself, and we'll see you again next month. The next agenda item for our committee is the approval of meeting records. These are from our January 7th, 2022 Regular School Committee Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. And a second. I see Ms. Quelo is giving us a second. Were there any edits or concerns that we had with the meeting records before I do a roll call vote? I do not see any hands, so let me quickly call the roll. Do it alphabetically with myself last. Mayor Cahill?
As I was not in attendance, I'll abstain.
An abstention. Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
And Ms. Abel, yes. 601. Thank you so much. We have a two-page agenda today, but I hope it's not too, too long. Item number five is a form for resident voice or input on agenda-related items. I didn't have anyone sign up in advance. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the body this evening? Does not appear to be the case. We'll move on to our items by consensus. Item number six lists warrant items A, B, C, D, and E. Collectively, I'd like a motion to approve these warrant items.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. A second. Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Generally, we don't have questions. I will call the roll. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
And Ms. Abel, yes. That's seven to zero. Moving right along, the School Committee Chair updates. I did want to call people's attention to an item that was placed in our packet. MAS-C, its outgoing president, sent us a reminder that we all have the opportunity to nominate any one of our members or ourselves to any of their standing committees. In your packet, you would have found that there's the Legislative Committee, the Resolutions Committee, Regional School Committees, doesn't really apply to Beverly, Special Education Committee, or the MIAA Committee. And I wanted to just make everyone aware of that opportunity. I don't want to put anyone on the spot this evening, but if there's anyone that would like to be nominated on behalf of our district to one of these committees, don't all raise your hands at once. Please do give it some thought. We will have an opportunity to submit appointment request forms. Do let the chair know if any of these interest you, or if you have any questions. Some of us that have been to MAS-C meetings pretty regularly over the past few years could undoubtedly explain a little bit about what these groups do. The Resolutions Committee, it happens to be one of my favorite. But anyway, okay. And that's also just a call to all of us. I think I mentioned it when I returned from this last conference. If there are any resolutions that we wish to put forward for actions that we want to advocate on behalf of all districts, we can certainly submit a resolution, as do some of our fellow school committees. Okay, with that, I'll move along. I did want to formally announce that Dr. Silva and Ms. Robinson had both, I guess, volunteered to be part of our BHS Principal Search Committee, and I'm pleased to nominate both of them to that search committee. And I believe, Ms. Robinson, have you agreed to be on the the initial, I can't remember what it's called, screening committee?
Yes.
Okay. So I thank you both for adding those additional time commitments to your schedule, and we look forward to seeing what results. And then in terms of our upcoming meetings, I would encourage you all to print off a copy of our spring schedule. Our next Committee of the Whole meeting is on January 25th, and it's preceded by our Finance and Facilities meeting, again, here in this building at 6:30, and Committee of the Whole at 7:30. Almost all of us ran for an elected position, and we do have a deadline with the City Clerk to put in our campaign finance reports by the 20th. I also wanted to say that nomination papers will be available in the April timeframe. I know the City Clerk has yet to update the website, but that's a call to anyone in the community that would like to join us here at the table. Nomination papers are part of the process for our local municipal elections. We also are considering a policy meeting to precede the Finance and Facility meeting on the 25th, and we need to check the availability of some other members. I'm going to recommend that as a body, we post it as a Committee of the Whole, because I have a lot of transition to do. I'm not sitting on that committee presently, so I'll post it as Committee of a Whole so that I'm able to participate with the subcommittee members. So we're looking at maybe 5:30 on Wednesday, the 25th. And the last date, I just wanted to point out that our March meeting is typically a joint council, and I've confirmed with the City Council President Julie Flowers, and all of the council members are putting, save the dates, for March 22nd. So in lieu of a Committee of the Whole meeting, probably in a similar fashion to last year, we'll use the auditorium, which provides a large enough stage where BevCam would be able to broadcast. Probably here. We can, we can talk about which one works best technologically. But the joint council, like similar to what we did last year, would be on March 22nd, so please save that date. I think that's it from the chair this month. And Dr. Churchek, if you don't mind?
Thank you very much. I have a few items this evening that I'll be sharing with you. I'm going to share with you, actually, we have Marissa Lomas here to share with us the, a request for an overnight field trip for the Beverly Middle School students to Quebec City in, in 2024. I have some, a presentation for you, which is the culmination of our FY24 budget priorities, a culmination of the meetings that we all did individually and with some stakeholder groups that I did, just to share where we are with that. And then finally, there's just informational items in your packets around the NEC Annual Report and their Annual Financial Audit Report, which I'm required to present to school committee. So I'm going to actually ask if Marissa Lomas would join us up here at the microphone. And the superintendent is recommending that the committee consider overnight field trip for our students in the middle school to Quebec City, Canada, and she's going to give you all the information.
Thank you so much for having me.
Green button.
I'm new to this, obviously. Thank you for letting me come tonight. I am the eighth grade French teacher at BMS. I started in September. I've been teaching for 17 years, and I am proposing tonight a trip to Quebec for next year, so the current seventh graders, which will be my eighth graders next year, to go to Quebec City in April of 2024. So I've traveled as a student myself when I was in college, and I've taken students to Paris when I was first teaching a long time ago. So this would be my first trip in a while, but it's something that I've been wanting to do as an educator for many years, but due to the pandemic and other, you know, little children that were born in my family, it hasn't been the right time. But now seems to be a good time to plan ahead. Sorry. So just kind of an overall, the itinerary will come in a few slides. We're going to see a bunch of different amazing sites and a lot of historical museums as well during the trip. So just a few to mention, you can see in the top right, that is the Mauvaisie Falls, so it's a huge waterfall. We're going to go to Chateau Frondac, which is a very famous site. There's a guided tour of a famous bread oven on the bottom left, and then we're going to go to La Citadelle, which is part of the itinerary. So just some highlights of the trip. And the itinerary gets a little bit more detailed. So it's three overnights, four days. It is a bus trip. I wanted to make it as equitable as possible. They do not need passports, which I'll explain in a little bit. So day one, we arrive there. I don't know exactly the timeframe, because it's pretty far out. And then we travel to the city. We go to the hotel, kind of take a tour. There's a dinner, dinner. And then day two, we visit some museums, and that falls that you saw in the first picture, and we have dinner at a Sugar Shack. Day three, we get breakfast. We go to some more museums, that guided tour of La Citadelle, another copper, a copper museum visit, and dinner. Day four, the last day, we go to the bread oven, and we tour a little village and travel home. So this is similar to the Puerto Rico trip, which is happening this year. This is what is included. I'm going through the same tour company, Explorica. So it's similar accommodations or things that the students would get, except it's three overnights. The total price per the quote is $973. There's no hotel information because it's too far in advance right now, but I will get that information about three months ahead of the trip, I believe. Like I mentioned before, I, you know, I was contemplating where to travel with the students and what was most equitable. And I just, I haven't been to Canada in a while myself, and when I found out that traveling by bus would only require a birth certificate, I figured that that was the proposal I wanted to come here tonight with. So some payment options, again, very similar to the Puerto Rico trip. You can do some monthly deposits. I plan to do fundraising. And my goal is, if this is approved, that we have more time to fundraise, and I can go speak to the current seventh graders before June and really plan some fundraising events. And then when they're my students next year, you know, the trip is already established, and we can really start working on fundraising to lower the cost for all students. And this is just from Explorica fundraising support, which would be later on. And everything that's included. It's a very reputable company, and I feel, you know, comfortable knowing that Mrs. Nichols has traveled with Explorica before, and she's using them again, and they're using the, you know, the company that I plan to use as well. So there's a lot of protection details, which I would then inform the parents of once, you know, everything is approved and we get closer to signing up. So just a little bit more about Explorica and how to go to the websites. The gentleman I'm working with, his name is Brian, very personable. So I have like a direct contact there if there's any questions. Thank you so much.
Mayor Cahill?
Want me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve this trip.
I will second that motion. Ms. Visnick?
Relative to the travel protection, are those daily costs above and beyond the base cost of $973, or is it part of the package?
Part of the package.
Fantastic.
Yes, and I hope to reduce the overall cost, but that is, yes.
I think we learned back in 2020 that protections for these trips are really important after all that we went through when, when things closed. So I think we're all very cognizant of making sure that's built into whenever we're making a commitment for, or at least encouraging families to make sure. But I think people have that really on their mind.
Dr. Silva?
Do you have a number of students in mind and chaperones?
So similar to what they're doing with Puerto Rico, I'd like to limit it to a certain number based off of, you know, I think they're doing some, looking at some grades and making sure the students are held accountable academically. And if there's any discipline issues, that would be a factor in whether that student would go or not. My goal is around 30. Right now, I have two colleagues interested in traveling with me, and it's typically six to eight students per teacher. So I think I'm hoping for 30, which is similar to what the Spanish department has right now.
So there is hope you might need one of us to also chaperone?
Definitely.
This committee, I think this was very attractive to the group, just so. There's a lot of interest.
All right, I won't, I won't subject anyone to my really bad French, except to say bonsoir. It's a fair handful of decades ago that I got to three or four years in a row chaperone, a very similar trip.
Oh, really?
Many of the places that you're mentioning and the activities I've done.
Oh, really?
It's a tremendous experience, and it's really exciting.
Oh, good.
I appreciate that you're willing to organize this and do it, and, and all the best in putting it all together. I do want to ask, you said that for the, for the kids, the kids wouldn't need to show a passport if they're American citizens. You may have students who are not citizens. Would they need to show their passport for their country of, you know, birth or citizenship? Or I'm just wondering if, or if we'd, I guess you'd have to figure that out.
Yeah, I'll definitely ask Brian that question, because when I mentioned this, I was surprised to know they didn't need their passports. And I was like, are you sure? Like, I want to make sure this. So I'll definitely follow up with him and ask him that question, but that's a really good question.
Oh, have you been to Quebec?
A long time ago.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm very excited, because it's, it's great to do, to be an educator and take students, but to see it through their eyes is just, you know, another experience. So I'm very excited.
And you're, you're bringing the A-list of chaperones here.
Right, exactly. Yeah, they were like, I'll go. I'm like, all right, fine, great. I have a great team, so I'm very excited.
Ms. Visnick?
Is that April Vacation Week?
Yes.
It's 2024. I have to look.
I know. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't pull up the calendar and look.
It is. I asked for that week and just a shorter trip, so it would be less money and just so that people could, if they wanted to do something else, they would have a few days.
Well, right, and then we don't have to worry about missing school or having the chaperones be missing for other classes. So that's the best, in my opinion, that's the best time. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I'm going to call myself. I will sound like a broken record. I think student travel is one of the, you know, most important things that we can do to provide for our students. I actually, just before the world shut down, got to embarrass myself in front of my own children, bringing them to Quebec City to show them how much of my French I had forgotten from high school and college, and even from working. But I think this sounds like a wonderful opportunity. I appreciate how far in advance you are letting families plan. I think that the Puerto Rico trip caught a few parents off guard with how close it was to the holidays and how soon they needed to make decisions. So this is absolutely fantastic that you're bringing this to us now. I do feel a little sadness for the eighth graders who won't be able to go, but I hope that they have an opportunity in high school to also experience. that they have an opportunity in high school to also experience travel because I think it is so important for our students. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I feel the same way and I unfortunately wish I could take this group. It's just too, not enough time and.
Okay. Ms. Wiznick.
Do you have, is somebody in your chaperone group like a nurse or what is our, is there a plan for if healthcare is required?
Yeah, that's a really good question. The two people that have already said they were interested are, I don't think are, I'm assuming they're CPR certified, but they're not nurses. So I would definitely look into making sure somebody was knowledgeable. I'm sure I could talk to Brian as well. They must have. I know there's a chaperone at night at the hotel to make sure students don't leave. So I'm sure there's some sort of emergency contact as well.
I think, I think with our high school band trip, there's very much competition for who gets to chaperone. And if in fact you are a certified nurse.
Oh, you're like done, yeah.
Yeah, you, you get to the front of the line, right?
I get that, yeah.
So when, when traveling, it seems like that, that, that might be a good thing. If you needed a fourth chaperone, that might be a good quality to look for in someone.
Yep.
You better start studying.
I know, I know.
EMT classes are offered at the high school, I heard, after school, right?
They may need a pilot.
Oh, yes, in case anyone needs, yeah.
I mean.
Okay. Is there any more discussion before I take a roll call vote? We do have a member at home. I'm looking for hands, no hands, okay. We'll take a quick roll call. Mayor Cahill.
May we? That's yes.
Ms. Quayle.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie.
Yep.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Dr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Wiznick.
Yes.
And I have to remember, bien sûr, right? Of course. Yes, so seven zero. Enjoy the trip and do consider some of us if you need chaperones. Thank you. I know.
So maybe not as riveting as our trip to Canada. Instead, so I have some information just to share with you this evening. This is a little bit more on the budget process as I do every time we introduce, just keeping in mind that our budget is built on our goals that we have for our district. And so we, we always kind of bring that to the forefront. I want to thank all of the time that you gave me as we talked about our budget priorities and as we were moving forward. These again are our focus areas for 2023. We talked about a lot of these in each of our individual conversations. I mean, we always again keep them at the forefront. We want to make sure that decisions that we're making around the budget match the decisions and the, and the aspirations that we have for our district. So starting with the, I'm going to have to just, hold on a minute, there you go. Starting with the factors that impact. So this is really our first real dive into what, as we begin to think about crafting our budget for FY24. There are some things that we have to keep in mind as we move into the next year. And the, our first and foremost this year, as you'll find out as we go forward, are the contractual obligations that we know we already have. We have our, our Unit A, Unit B and Unit C teachers, MTA contracts are, have another year on them. So we know what those obligations are right now. However, the AFSMI units are up for renegotiation this year. So we'll have to keep in mind some reserve for negotiations as we go through the process of, of negotiating with those units. I have information tonight for you just on our current enrollments and what our anticipated enrollments look like for FY24, where we think we'll be. That is very important information as we look at staffing and make decisions around staffing at each of the building levels. Again, as we heard tonight from the high school in an earlier meeting, we're continuing to strive to make sure that we're reviewing and looking and resourcing high-quality curriculum materials for our students across all content areas. Again, keeping in mind, we do have Essar funding for that. And so there are some alternative funding sources for some of the things that we bring forward. We always consider our department funding requests, whether that's our buildings and grounds or food service or transportation. And then as I mentioned in an earlier meeting, and I'll continue to bring forward to the committee, increases in special education costs, which this year are a little higher than they have been in the past couple of years, but for reasons that I'll explain as we go forward. So those, these are the things that as we craft this budget moving forward, we want to keep these things in mind and make sure that they'll kind of help guide us in terms of where we'll need to be. For some reason, that's not working. All right. So again, just a review of what we're doing in the budget process. We've, I, I met and identified by priorities of the school committee and stakeholders. Jean and I are in the midst of collaborating with our, well, actually collaborating with the principals and central office. That was really back around the shared vision and framework that would guide the decisions. Identifying administrative efficiencies and restructuring opportunities. We spend a lot of time taking a look at what are we proposing? Are there efficiencies? Where should we, what do we need to do? We do that when we look at staffing. We do that when we're looking at operations. And assessing the enrollments and the impact that they'll have on staffing, reviewing requests. And this is where we are right now. So Jean and I in the midst of our meetings, individual meetings with building leaders and department heads meet going, we go through their entire budget and all of the things that they have together to help put together what our needs will be. And then finally, we'll come to the table and we'll collaborate with the city to discuss the proposed city contribution in relationship with the school budget. And so that's the process that we'll continue to go through. So I spent about an hour with each one of you or an hour and a half talking about priorities that you all have for the FY24 school year. I think that I look for trends. I then take all the notes and look for trends. I think across the board, the, the real message that I got from all of you was to kind of stay true to some of the things that we've, have named as important over the last couple of years. I think we all knew as we come back out of the pandemic that, that things that we do that we put in place are not going to be an immediate fix, that we need to kind of commit to them and give them a couple of years to settle in. I still left it under the four general categories that we had looked at before, but made some, some changes to some of the individual priorities as we look at them. So we talked a lot about social, emotional and mental health over the last couple of years and trauma and stress. This year in particular, a couple of people mentioned making sure that we're taking a look at that transition to the freshman academy and what kinds of support students might need in that. Continuing to look at increasing counseling, making sure that we're partnering with outside agencies and providing our families with access to outside agencies as we go through that. Tools for teachers, in particular, looking at some of our professional development to make sure that we're helping them as they recognize and respond to students' social and emotional needs, thinking about how we can do that. And then continuing the partnership that we have with City Connects to strengthen what we're doing in terms of our tiered system of supports for social, emotional learning. Under curriculum, teaching and learning, many of you talked about making sure that we continue the work we're doing on the graduate outcomes and the pathways. We heard earlier this evening in our SISL meeting from Julie Ferrara about, we, we saw a grade increase in, in student interest along the pathways and a cleaner and clearer definition of how kids would get into those pathways and what supports. And then how can we expand them and strengthen them with some more authentic and relevant real-world activities? Looking at academic supports, tutoring possibilities and options, scholars' club, after-school help, making sure that we're, we keep an eye on that and that we're providing those supports for students that need it. There was many conversations about supports for executive functioning and what are we doing to make sure that some of the study skills and some of the skills that students, particularly those that may have lagged or had lack of access to through the pandemic, making sure that we're building those in and strengthening those for our students. Addressing the lingering impact of COVID. And I, I think I spoke with several of you. I think as we've now been halfway through the second year in return, we're really able to kind of hone in on the grade levels that were most greatly impacted. And it's a very early literacy, so, so for some of us, young, our youngest learners, we've noticed and our principals are bringing information forward that we need a continued effort and a little extra attention on our first and second graders as early literacy skills were pretty largely impacted, as well as taking a look at students that are rising, well, rising, they're actually freshmen now. So the freshman sophomore class that were sixth and seventh and eighth graders, knowing that the, the, the lack of opportunity to attend school and some of the things that happened to them throughout the time really, really put an impact for them. And then finally, some conversations around elementary library supports. We added some library supports this year, continuing to take a look and making sure that we're able to provide what's needed at the elementary level in the libraries. Under operation, our continued work on sustainability, I'm really happy to report. I think we're making some great strides. We have established green teams at each and every school. We have individual teacher facilitators. They actually are meeting together as a group, I think on the 17th, and, and making sure that they're collaborating together across all seven schools with their green teams. There was a lot of conversation about transportation, either increasing ridership, making sure, taking a look at the late buses. And I actually had just had a meeting with Dana and, and we're setting off to take a look at some ideas about the ridership. We have a new staff member in transportation that you all approved. And I'll bring her forward to introduce her at one of maybe the FNF meetings. But we're, we're going to really dig into some of that. And then conversations about lights and stands at 40 Field. I've, I've had a conversation already with Mike Collins and I think, I think the way forward that we might be going with that is to take a look at putting a smaller group together to meet perhaps through FNF or something like that, but just to investigate that more in depth. And then finally, conversations about streamlining the use of platforms for communication purposes. Communication isn't an area that we've really tried to concentrate on. We heard earlier from the high school around the guidance office and the work that they've done. And we're continuing to dig into that as we go forward and as well as in parent-teacher communication. So these were the priorities that rose out of the conversations that we have. I hope that all of you can hear your voices in the list that I just shared. And so it's really helpful to me and I really do appreciate you taking the time to meet individually because it feels, it's really important for us as we kind of craft the budget, that we're looking to strengthen the things that we think that are important in our community. One of the things that we had an opportunity to talk with in each one of our meetings and that I have, I, I, this is the first time that we've brought forward in this sort of format at school committee during the budget process is a discussion about capital expenditures and what we're doing for large expenses under buildings and grounds. And so I think given the resources that we might have available to us, that it has prompted the conversation to go a little deeper. But also, we did begin this work last spring, if you remember, Bob Shiroli came forward. I don't know if it was to the full committee or to, to just a smaller subset of the committee, but to talk about some of the planning that we've been doing. We've been taking some time to really reflect and look at our campuses and look at our facilities and make sure that we have a good handle on what, what our needs might be. I've had a meeting with Mike Collins and Bob Shiroli as well to kind of talk about some of these things. And we have another meeting scheduled prior to when. So, so typically those things that are under capital expenditures are going to fall on the city. And, and so Mike and I, Mike does a report to the city council. Mayor, I think it's in March each year. And so the capital, yep, yeah, updating the capital plan. So he and I talked about having this conversation, making sure that he has that opportunity to hear, you know, some of the items. And these are some items that came from all of you in our meetings, once again. And so roofs are on the list because they always are on the list. I will say, just a word of caution, the, the state, I'm not really sure which agency, I should probably know that, but has suspended the accelerated repair program for schools. The MSBA has suspended the accelerated repair program. That was in response to the, all these rising costs and the commitments they had already made to new building. And so that's something that we're going to have to keep our eye on as to whether or not we're eligible. We had never been eligible for that because there's a requirement that your roofs are 25 years or older in order to qualify. We were just creeping up on 25 years on a couple of our roofs, but at this point, that program is suspended. So we'll have to watch and see. But we do have some, I, I've, I met, as I met with each building principal, asking, we have some buildings that have some repair pieces that they're working with. And so we've got them on a list that we're collecting. Playgrounds is a, a real, a need, and that was what Bob had presented earlier to the committee. We had done a, a sort of a inspection at each one of the individual elementary schools. We've prioritized areas and playgrounds that might be in need of repair more so than others. We've spent a lot of time talking with leadership and with, I have, with Bob and Jean and I have spent a lot of time talking about the fact that typically our playgrounds have been financed in the past by PTOs and that largely our playgrounds have been built by PTOs fundraising and that sort of thing. And, you know, A, look at what resources are available. So if we have resourcing available, if there's a need, we certainly don't want to get to a point where a school has to shut down their playground because it's not safe or it's not sturdy. And so that conversation is what does that look like? I anticipate some conversations much like the one we had around outdoor learning spaces at Hannah, where there might be a partnership of the two or looking at that. But it's on that, those are the kinds of conversations we want to have is how are we going to make sure that we have a, a plan that can carry us through so that we're addressing all the needs, obviously with some limited funding. I put air conditioning on the list. Air conditioning, again, I meet with multiple stakeholders. This is something that comes from the teachers and the union. Some questions about what will we do if heat indexes reach certain points and some of, that was a big concern. Hasn't been a concern over the last couple of years. We haven't hit those marks, but taking a look and having some planning for some of our classrooms that might in late June or early September sometimes hit heat indexes that are, that make them not able to, not good working conditions. So, you know, that's one of the things that's on the radar as we, when you think about capital planning, you need to be thinking about all of the areas that might, that might come up. HVAC is something that we're constantly looking at and constantly working at. We know that we have one, one or two units. Mike Collins and I are working together on this. They're individual units that might be on the top of some of the roofs right now at the elementary schools. And so we have targeted some of our resourcing that we have coming from Essar to make sure that we're doing that replacement. We work on the unit, we purchased the unit itself. The replacement comes from Mike and his crew at the city level. Flooring, we did a pilot, so to speak. We, we did replace the flooring in eight classrooms, Jean? Eight classrooms at Centerville this year. So if you've been in our schools, which are beautiful schools and we love them, the carpeting is 20 years old in many of them. And that, that is something that it comes up every year. Is there a way to replace carpeting with, with flooring that is different? We found a material, I'm not going to be able to remember the letters.
VCT.
VCT flooring. And we utilized that and put that in place in eight of the classrooms at Centerville. Approximately.
The cost was $9,000 per classroom approximately.
So it was about $9,000 per classroom. So we were, we were like excited to be able to get in and do some work and find out what it would look like and make sure that it was a material that worked for the classrooms. There are many advantages to it, many sustainable, in the sustain, area of sustainability, the kinds of cleaning that it requires, the waxes that it might use. We considered all of those things, the materials that are used to make it. And so again, now, $8,000 per classroom times the number of classrooms across the city. This is not something that's going to be done in one fell swoop, but something as we move forward that we like on the, on our, you know, on our radar. And then again, the lights that we've talked about, the lighting at the 40 Field, like if, if there's a possibility to do that, exploring, what would that look like? How did, how would that work? What would it require? And so that's something that we've put out there as a conversation, something that we can have as a conversation. In terms of buildings and grounds, these are some more larger expenses that our principals have identified in some of our buildings. Cafeteria tables in some of our elementary schools are very old and are becoming in disrepair. We actually have replaced some, we did, we've done some of that.
In schools.
In two schools, we've done that work, but cycling through, looking at all our schools and making sure that we are looking at that furniture in the cafeteria. Classroom furniture also in many of cases. So when we renovated, we've got new furniture in many of our classrooms and some of our classrooms we didn't. So some of our desks and chairs, just, this isn't anything that we're looking as a capital expense, but it's for us to have in our planning as we're thinking about buildings and grounds and some of the larger expenses that we might have. I'm happy to say we've addressed the bus cameras. So that was something that was a real priority for me as we went into the school year. The bid process became a lot more complicated than we anticipated. And so many thanks to Erin and Jean, they worked their way through that. We have identified a company, we've awarded our bid. Will you be replacing the cameras using, we've identified the funding source, I think it's revolving, right, or one of the transportation revolving. So we'll hopefully have cameras on the buses that will allow us to, you know, have a better handle on all things bus, right? So, yeah, so that, that work has been done.
Yep, so it's going to be inside the bus, looking for the students and their activities plus outside, like bus accidents.
Right. So it provides us that information and it'll be, it's on recorded and we'll be able to access that information. Exterior camper, cameras. We, as many of you know, the cameras that were put in at the elementary, it was the first time they ever had cameras. They have been great and we've utilized them for a number of different reasons, what a number of different situations throughout the year. One of the things that has come from that is that either principals have identified areas that don't have coverage, that they wish had coverage, or areas that don't, that the coverage that isn't, isn't broad enough. And so working with Mike Collins and Jake on that, sometimes it's moving a camera, sometimes sometimes it's changing a camera direction, but sometimes it's, we want a couple more additional cameras at that campus so that we're able to have coverage for the areas that the principals want to have. So that's something that, you know, we've talked about a lot with all, with them. And then finally, campus signage, and that's, I would say, kind of a random thing, some people feel like they need some different signage at different places, and so these are just some of the requests that came from our meetings with principals. So I don't think we've ever really came, come, taken a broad look at some of these larger expenses and shared out, so we thought this was a good opportunity to share with the committee some of these things that are on our radar. So, in terms of priorities, I might want to pause and see if there's questions or comments, I don't know. Mrs. Abel?
I don't see any hands.
All right, awesome. So.
I do have a, I do have a quick question.
Dr. Silva?
And I don't know if this is, I just bring this up because there have been some incidents at the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any thought on putting a couple speed bumps to control student driving through, student and parent driving through the parking lots?
It's been discussed, I know there's been a conversation, I'm not, I, I'm not sure that, so the topic has been brought forward, I don't know that I can go any further than that in terms of that, I don't know that there was resolution or anything, but I do know that the question has been asked. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's been identified that speed is necessarily an issue, you know, in some cases, but again, I know that the topic has come up, and I wasn't part of those conversations, so I can only say, I know they've talked about it, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Our budget calendar, this is the budget, we brought this forward to you, we're pretty much on track, we've made a couple of shifts, I actually, you'll notice that I'm having the discussion, we canceled the December meeting, then I didn't, next, in the next, in two weeks, when you all are meeting, I'm actually away at the Executive Committee Forum Conference myself, so we pushed this up to this period, but for the most part, we're on track. One of the things that I continue want to remind the committee about, in a typical year, we are looking right now, or in the next couple of weeks, at a potential governor's budget this year with the change of leadership. The budget, the governor is not required to present the governor's budget until March 1st, sometime in March, March, March 1st, yep. So they have that, there's a window when there's a change of leadership, that's in Mass Law. So, so we may, I'm not sure exactly when we'll get the governor's budget. We're going to proceed ahead with some assumptions that we'll make. Department of Ed, you know, has given some guidelines around assumptions. We know there's a minimum $35 per pupil, so that's a starting point, and so we'll, we'll kind of work through what we have, and we'll be waiting to hear what that comes. But once the governors come out, it will go in succession from then.
I would just say that I've joined a couple of the PTO meetings in the last couple days, I know there's lots of other PTO meetings. I like to remind all of our constituents that this is the time to bring forward any of their concerns as well. Often at our public hearing, it's too late to really make impactful changes, so I think I'll just state it for the record and issue a reminder to all of us to make sure that we let our constituents know about this timeline that's been presented, and how really it's incumbent upon people to speak with us, or to speak with the superintendent about any of the priorities of the community before we get too far down the path and start seeing the budget book.
Yep, and I would also add that I'm meeting Friday the 13th, oh, it is Friday the 13th. I'm meeting on Friday with PTO presidents, so if individual constituents want to talk to their PTO presidents, they, their president, I'll be, I have a budget section each time I meet with them, so I'll also be meeting with them on Friday.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, and so, that brings us to enrollments. Enrollments, as I have said, are relatively steady in Beverly, we've got some ups and downs in different grade levels as we always do, and so the, this is the elementary enrollments. I've left the last, I started doing this four years ago, so I've left all four years up consecutively for you to see what those enrollments look like. This is our FY '23 actual, I think these were actual as of last Monday, if I, if I have that correct. And so you can see that this year, we have a much larger kindergarten than we had in FY '22, and we have a, you know, so the numbers vary, right, from grade to grade, our first grade numbers are a little down, our second grade numbers look similar. If you're really trying to compare cohort to cohort, again, the kids that were in kindergarten in FY '22 are now in first grade and FY '23, first grade to second grade and so forth. So you could see we're relatively consistent in elementary. Again, it varies from grade level to grade level. So these are our numbers for elementary school. Here are our numbers for middle school, again, relatively stable across, we had a, we had a little dip in sixth and a little dip in seventh, and I actually took the time to talk with the middle school to see if they had noticed anything. Donna made some, did some research for us, too. One of the things that we did realize is that we have a number of students who enrolled in St. John's Prep, because St. John's Prep now has grades six, seven, and eight, which is a newer, a newer thing, so I think 10 to 11 in each grade level were enrolled newly at St. John's Prep. So that was kind of an interesting piece of data that we hadn't had before. And then at the high school, again, relatively the same, although you'll see, we had a small freshman class last year, and we had a larger senior class, and so the numbers just kind of move around a little bit. Overall, we had, we have a drop from 78, from 47, 18 to 46, 67. I think one piece of that is the number of students that went to Essex Tech, because we had, we have currently enrolled, typically we have about 30 students that go to Essex Tech, our sophomores, we have 51 sophomores at Essex Tech and 54 freshmen at Essex Tech. So that kind of accounts for the difference in the numbers, as well as an additional, probably seven or eight who went to a virtual, either the TECA Virtual School or the Commonwealth Virtual School. So we sort of did some research to try to find out where are these kids, and to make sure that we had an idea of where they were going. But we're still at 46, 67 for our enrollments. I have a breakdown for you for preschool. Our preschool numbers were at 135 last year, they're at 125. That fluctuates as well, it goes up and down based upon the number of students that are identified as special education students versus peers. I think, I think Bethany said, our peers are relatively stable, it really, it's the number of special education students that are identified for the program. Our out of district numbers, which, you know, again, we're doing a great job working with our programs in district and keeping some of our students in, that remained relatively stable from 69 to 70. And so when you see the special education cost increase, you'll, when we get to that point in a couple, in a month or two, you'll understand it's really the cost of special education and not necessarily that we have a whole lot of people going out of district. And then finally, our homeschool numbers decreased from 105 to 82, so a number of families who had opted, as you saw the big increase in FY '21, when, when we were in the midst of the pandemic, our numbers have got, dropped back down, almost back to where they were pre-pandemic in terms of homeschool.
I have a quick question on homeschools. Do we feel like we are accurately capturing all the students that are electing not to attend our school? We have a pretty good grasp of what programs parents are using with their students, or what approaches is that?
So they're required to file a homeschool program, and in Beverly, Julie Smith, the principal at Centerville, she is our homeschool liaison, she takes care of and manages all, and approves all of those homeschool plans, and the parents file those plans at the beginning of the year, and so, you know, she does a review and works with Donna to make sure we're tracking them, so.
And do we have students that sort of go in and out of the public school and homeschool situation? I know that some students had elected during the COVID times not to necessarily do remote school, but to do homeschool, have they returned?
Correct. Those are the ones that are returning. I think we've seen, like, so we had 168 students in particular out in, during, in the height of the pandemic, and we're, you know, 80 or so of them have returned.
Okay.
And then, you know, I mean, so it's a, it's a relative, I mean, those that choose to homeschool, they are, they have, they're a pretty tight group sometimes, they have, they have what they do, and so I would say those that left for the pandemic, some left for the pandemic and found out they loved it, and they're continuing to do that, but a great number of them have returned.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so now.
Looks like Mayor Cahill has a question.
Thank you, Madam President. I was just waiting to see if there was another slide. Do we similarly track the number of charter out and choice out?
Yes, yep, yep, very closely, as a matter of fact. I have all those numbers.
Okay.
Yep, and so I will tell you that, you know, I looked very closely at them, the, within the elementary, actually through grade eight, our school choice out numbers are all in the single digits and they're relatively stable. The biggest place that we had an increase in school choice out was at 11th, 10th and 11th grade, and they went to virtual. And so the number of students, so, so virtual and, the TECA and the Commonwealth Virtual are considered school choice, that those are in our school choice out numbers, and so that there were, I think, we had, you know, I think eight new students, and they were all in grades 10 and 11, and they chose to go to the virtual school.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yep. All right, so the next piece of it is contractual obligation. So just to be clear, these are, we already have signed contracts, these are obligations that we already know we have, based upon our actual teaching staff, and because all of our MTA contracts are still settled, and because we know what those increases are, and because we're beyond December 1st, and we know what steps and columns people are going to be taking, we have a pretty good number, that these are accurate numbers. The only variable would be any, any change in ASME, and again, that's sort of, we're under negotiation, we don't have those exact numbers, but we accounted for the fact that there would be increases for ASME.
Right, so the 2.75 is for all staff.
For all, yeah.
But if there's anything above that, then it would have to go up.
So, to just meet the COLA, the two and three-quarter increase that we have, it's For our steps, these are teachers who have already declared that they have, will be moving down, they'll go from step one to step two, or step six to step seven. That increases 683,989. And then lanes.
That's for also for ASME, too.
And that's also for ASME, thank you. And then lanes are when teachers have declared that they've taken coursework that moves them from one column to the next column to the next column in our grid. So if you've achieved a master's 15, or a master's 30, or a master's 60, or a CAGS, master's 75, they'll, those all impact your salary and teachers move in that way. And so that number, we are, we're pretty comfortable with our $250,000 estimate. If you remember, in our original, when we originally signed the contract, we added a master's plus 75 column, and that hit, for the, the majority of those hit last year. And so we did actually have a larger increase last year, but we believe that we're, we're pretty stable at the, with that number, we feel very comfortable with that. And we are estimating our healthcare increase at 3% would be 259,282. We just put the number at 5% up there, the 3%, you know, we haven't actually had our meeting with the city, we know, we sit with Bryant and we'll really dig through and find out what that actual number, what he's anticipating for the city, and what we would anticipate for our employees. But 259, we typically go with 3%, so we started with that, but we wanted you to know what that number would be at 5%.
And that's what the number we used was a 3% on our financial forecast that we did with the city.
Yeah, yeah. So we know that without any further ado, we're looking at 2.5 million, actually 2.6 million.
2.6.
Yeah, and that's just contractual obligations over the budget that we have right now. So that's, this is how we, this is our starting point, this is where we begin, we figure these things out. As a reminder, last year, the city contribution was 56,185,493. Chapter 70 funding that we got in was 13,158,441, and our final budget appropriation last year was 69,343,934. Again, the rest of these are all TBD as we work through them. And this is just the legislative process. We don't know yet, I would say that at a minimum, we could expect 180,000 increase in Chapter 70 funding, that would be if we're at the minimum $35 per pupil, that's the minimum estimate. I've heard anywhere from 4% to 5% that, you know, cities could maybe feel comfortable thinking in that range. For us, that would be about $650,000 increase in Chapter 70 funding. Again, we're waiting, the budget is, the governor's budget isn't due until the beginning of March. House Ways and Means typically comes out in April, Senate comes out in May, and the final Chapter 70 numbers, we usually have by June, which is usually the time that we're voting our final budget, so. Our next steps, we have budget meetings, so we're going to finish our budget meetings with principals and departments heads up. We're about 50% through, we've met with, you know, about half of them. In these meetings, as I said, we review the enrollments, we look at staffing needs, we review the non-staff needs, we review the costs associated with each department, and then Jean and I first sit, and we, the famous orange sheet, I don't know if you all remember that, but we'll work together with a fine-tooth comb and get through the orange sheet, which really identifies what are we asking for in the appropriated budget, and then, then we'll sit and we'll look, we meet with the city to discuss the city contribution. That's what I wanted to give as my update around the budget tonight.
I'm looking around the table for hands, Dr. Silva.
This PowerPoint will get circulated?
Yep, it'll be, well, it'll be in the folder, it'll be, it's always posted online, you know, on the website, and so yes, it'll, we'll put it right in the.
Thank you.
It'll be in the folder.
Looking for any other hands?
Oh.
Mayor Cahill.
Just a quick question, because I haven't heard anything from MMA or anyone there, but have you gotten any input yet on logistics of the rollout of the ballot question that's creating additional resources, is that?
I have not heard, I have not, although I.
The question is, will that have an impact on the coming school year budget, the next, you know, fiscal year budget or not? I don't know how quickly that takes effect.
You mean the, the millionaire tax, or whatever that's called, that money?
The ballot, yes, the ballot question that's going to raise additional tax revenue for transportation and education.
So no, no, I will tell you that there's been a great deal of legislative advocacy by both MASs and MASc around how we would, we would, if we got to have the say as to how it would roll out, what priorities we would place, what areas we would look at. As I mentioned in an earlier meeting, 14% increase on private day and residential placements. For Beverly, that's at about a $750,000 cost. That's just in raised increases to tuitions to kids we already have there, and so that, that's one big area of legislative advocacy. I think what people are hoping to do is advocate for a pothole account, so to speak, to help districts through the quick increase of that 14%, knowing that circuit breaker will maybe provide some more relief in the second year, but that comes a year later, so there's that question. There's, there's discussions for legislative advocacy for people that are engaged in building projects right now. I mean, a building, if you were in the midst of a building project right now, it is not a good time, you know, they're really caught, half-built buildings and, you know, plans that have been approved that are now off-kilter, and just because of the inflation cost, there's a legislative advocacy to fund the Chapter 70 with the actual inflation instead of the 4.5%, which is in the SOA. So SOA is the legis, the, the, the actual regulation that guides it, and in it, it said it has a 4.5 limit, but there's advocacy to say, please fund this at an inflation rate that's more realistic to what's going on. And there's, I think, other, there's one other advocacy around something about rural regionals, but I, I kind of don't know that one off the top of my head, what they're doing. But, so, so what has happened is, we have at MASs a legislative advocacy group, MASc has done, has people who do legislative advocacy, and the groups are really trying to work together this year to try to help guide the question. So the question is, what are you using that money on? Do you use it on a pothole? Do you use it, you know, how do we distribute it equitably? And there's not been any, anything released, at least that I've gotten, that, that gives us a direction.
That's all helpful and instructive. I guess the question that I am posing, I don't have an answer, I think we all want to know the answers. Will that increase in the tax rate on taxable income over a million kick in with the tax a year, the tax year 2022, i.e. for taxes that'll pay, be paid in '23, or does it kick off a year later? I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, you mean technically, when will that money be available? I would, I would have to guess that they think it's going to be this year, for this FY '24 budget season, because the advocacy is very strong for how to use that now.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would assume that, that, that's what that would be.
Thank you.
I'm going to call Ms. I'm going to call Ms. Visnick, and then I have a thought as well.
Thank you. I, this question might be for you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering where we would see the, I believe it's 40S money that should be coming to us from the state, relative to the affordable housing that we just built for families. And so for each student that's living at Anchor Point, we're supposed to be getting some amount of funding, right? There was supposed to be a flat, a flat amount of money, and then money each year per head of each student.
So I think there's a threshold, though, and I'm not sure we met the threshold. So I would have to check that.
Yeah, how familiar are you with the language of 40S?
I wouldn't be asking this question if I was familiar enough, sir.
The, I mean, there was, there's money that comes from a different lettered...
Your...
There's money comes from a different lettered piece that is based on the number of units. That, that has come already, I believe. The money based on the students does, there's a, there's a threshold and a trigger...
Correct.
Before we get any.
And the number of students. So we were, we have 14, 15, I think, we, by count of students, but I'm not sure when we hit the threshold of the 40S. So that's a question that, it's a great question. We actually had a conversation last week just about 40S, and trying to figure out what, how that, how that comes into play. And so we have identified all the students, we know what students, we know, and again, it's about, it's, the question is about whether we've met the threshold for, because it's opening in phases, so phase one, and then phase two, and may, so it's the size of the project, and the threshold of the number of students, and the threshold of the cost of the students, so those are all factors.
All right, so let's, let's roll forward to phase two. Let's imagine we're in phase two, and we've tripped the threshold. Where, will we see that money as a line item for our income in the school committee? Or will that money be going on to the quote-unquote "city side," and, and the schools won't see it until slash unless it comes from a city appropriation back into the schools?
Let's, let's explore that together. My guess would be that it would, it would come to the schools, but I don't know who administers the 40S program at the state level. Let's look into it together.
Yeah, it's, it's under the public housing...
40S itself is?
Well, it's on the same page, when I do my research. So it's a great question. I wish, I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, we can table it.
But it's a really good one.
Let's figure it out together.
I have a third question, because I don't know if by opening it by phases, if we enroll 14 kids in '22, '23, and then we enroll 20 kids in '23, '24, if there's a combination of the two years, or if, since we didn't hit the threshold, you know, I'm not sure. There's, those are all questions that I still have, and Bethany and I were working through, looking individually at those this past week. So, great question, and I need, I need, if anyone knows anything, they can always help me, because that's a, that's one that's new to me.
Okay, the thought I want to share with this committee is that typically, we invite our representative and our senator to join us at one of these early-year meetings. I've sort of held off on that the last year. I think we did it virtually. It was a little challenging virtually to meet with them. But if this body is interested, I can reach out to Mr. Paracella and Joan Lovely's office to see if they would want to join us in maybe our February meeting, one of the two meetings, so that we can get a picture from both of them on some of the competing priorities for funding this year, where some of the educational priorities are shaping up, and for us to be able to ask them questions. Typically, they like to have the questions in advance, so they have time to research them. If that's something that interests the body, I'll certainly pursue it for us for February, either the regular or the committee of the whole.
I might, I might add, too, just for, for your information, that there's a subgroup of superintendents, and they, we've actually been hosting them in Beverly, as we have our meeting for, there's a group of like seven or eight superintendents from the Northshore Roundtable. And about two weeks ago, we actually had the, the superintendents, and we invited legislators, and so Jerry Paracella was their representation from Joan Lovely's office. So we've been, we have been meeting with them and advocating and, and telling our stories, so to speak, so they're, but it's a very important part of, I think, any advocacy that we can make to legislation is going to be very important, as the mayor pointed out, like, with all of this funding that's being released and decisions that are being made about how it's going to come forward. So advocacy is very important with our legislation right now.
Thank you. Are there other questions? I'm looking online, no.
I have, I just, so my just final point, it's not on a slide, but you found in your packet, you had a copy of the annual report, as well as the annual financial audit of the Northshore Consortium. The Northshore, I am, the superintendent is the member of the board at the consortium, so the Board of Directors for the consortium is all of the superintendents. They serve regionally our community, and we, they, they are required to provide these documents to school committees for all participating communities. So you received a copy of these documents as part of your, documents, documents as part of your documents. So there you go. And again, if you have any questions about it or anything, you may feel free to reach out to me, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Yep.
Looking ahead on our agenda, we have committee reports. I would ask this, Michael.
Thank you.
I thought I did that. We have committee reports next on our agenda. The Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities, Ms. Visnick, if you would.
Thank you. We, the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities has not met since our last readout, which was in your, in the meeting minutes that we approved at the beginning of this meeting. And the big thing we did in that meeting was talk about the HANA Outdoor Learning Center. And the Standing Committee unanimously and enthusiastically recommended that outdoor learning center be built. And so with that, I have this evening for this body, some information was in your packet, and the recommendation, and I'm, I would like to make the motion that the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends approval of the HANA Outdoor Learning Center.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Are there any questions or discussion? Mayor Cahill.
Couple of questions, thanks. The balance of the budget would be covered where?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and just looking through the different line items here, is the expectation that it would be project managed by the Department of Public Services, or in-house, or? I don't, I don't see a line for a project manager. I do see a line for the contractor.
I would assume that it would be outbuildings and grounds, people would oversee it.
In-house project manager, yeah, it makes sense, too. Okay, great, thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, we had a fantastic presentation. I was just facilitating the Zoom meeting, because I'm not part of FNF, but I had the benefit of sitting here while Gabrielle and the parent liaison presented. Seems like a pretty exciting project. Without further ado, we'll take a roll call vote on allowing the PTO and the district to put a new pavilion at the backside of the Hannah Elementary School. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Quelo? Dr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
Ms. Abel, yes. Super excited for that.
Awesome, thank you. The Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities is next scheduled to meet two weeks from this evening, February, ooh, January, Groundhog Day, sorry. I don't want to rush any of us. January 25 at 6:30 PM here in this room.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Robinson, would you report out on the SISIL committee meeting we just had?
Yes, thank you. So, we met this evening at 6:30, and in terms of student life, we found out that our BMS students really know how to fundraise and have fun. Their holiday fundraisers made $4,000, bringing the total they've raised for Nature's Classroom to $11,000, which is really impressive. They're going to have a winter Waffle Land on January 28. I'm trying to remember what that was for.
It's for all four grades. They're going to split the proceeds.
Okay, thank you. And then at Beverly High School, just some things that have been going on. They held on-the-spot admissions for Salem State and Northshore. Seniors are solidifying their reach internships or projects. Many students moved on yesterday from DECA districts to DECA states, 85 in total, I believe. So congratulations to Ms. M. and all our DECA students. Principal Betty Taylor proposed and SISIL approved a change to the grading system at the high school. So starting next semester, students who do not attempt assignments will be given a grade of zero, rather than the 50 that's currently in place. So that's only for students who don't attempt to do work, not if they, not if they try to do something. So the 50 would still remain. Students will have the opportunity to bring up their grades, and it was brought forth that the importance of teachers providing constructive and timely feedback, and making sure that we don't use this change for any punitive measures, but for growth. And then, members of the PHS administrative team, shared information on curriculum, college and career readiness, student supports, and student life. They packed a lot of awesome information on curriculum, common assessments, curriculum materials, vertical alignment, as well as career pathways, dual enrollment, the After Dark Program, student support programs, and student life. So that would be, if anybody wants to take a look on BevCam, that would be a good meeting to just pay attention to, if you want any, like, additional information on all that great stuff that's going on in Beverly High School. And our next meeting will be on February 8. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Robinson. The negotiations, Subcommittee has not met since the last time I reported out. We have received a few communications from the Ask Me unit in particular, but we do anticipate receiving a letter at some point soon, as Dr. Churchett had mentioned during our budget overview and planning. Dr. McKenzie, for policy?
Thank you. The Policy Committee has begun to organize our process, and so as our Chair, Ms. Abel, said earlier, we're proposing to meet on the 25th prior to FNF. We'll confirm availability of the members of the committee, and we'll work together to begin policy review. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now our last agenda item is an opportunity for school committee members to share communications that they've had. Go ahead, Ms. Visnick.
Thank you. I had a communication around the, I'm going to, I need to watch Dr. Churchett's face when I say this, around the Program of Practice Challenge of continuing to encourage our students and our staff to have fun, especially while trying to do their fundraising, to inspire joy. We want our students to come here and be joyful, but simultaneously, we need to be inclusive. And so how to balance that line versus being discouraging or discouraging a given activity because it's not inclusive. And so that got punted right across the table, right over there. And, and then similarly, I punted over, maybe just today, the days are running together lately. I have a constituent whose student is on an IEP and has not met the new higher MCAS graduation threshold, and is wondering, what is the, what is our path as a district to help any and all students who are in that same boat? And, and we talked about that at a, at a previous meeting, but I think we're looking for some more detailed information, and then to maybe advertise that, make it available to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee member? Oh, go ahead.
Like, things from our board, or no? We'll do that next?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the communications is a broad opportunity to talk about some of the events you may be participated in, or things that your constituents are bringing forward.
Okay, well, I just wanted to just bring up something. So North Beverly and Ward 5 in particular lost a great friend to the Beverly Public Schools with the passing of Frank Forty on Christmas Day. So on a personal level, he was a great family friend and neighbor who I've known since I was born, and just a great friend to the, our Beverly student athletes. And I just want to say Frank would be missed at all the games that, and all over Beverly.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any other members? I, I had just a couple of things I wanted to report out. I have continued to receive communications from parents that are questioning whether we, as a committee, might be interested in a return to masking, especially with different variants of the COVID and flu and RSV and all the other ailments that are in, in our community, also asking about any willingness on the district's behalf to encourage more vaccination, whether it be flu shots, or COVID vaccines, and boosters, and things along those lines. Refer them to our nurse leader, Jody Elders, as well as Dr. Churchett. I've also fielded a number of concerns from parents who received MCAS scores and first report cards, and wondering what additional homework help might be available for their students who are just sort of on the cusp, and maybe need a little extra push, asking about tutoring opportunities, and what other, other things they can do to help their students close the learning gaps that have been caused with the disrupted past couple of school years. And then I shared also with Dr. Churchett a concern with some of our high school students about music being sort of an all-or-nothing proposition, where it is a full-time course that you take for a full year, and that, that we have many students that had really enjoyed musical activities in the elementary and middle school grades, but they can't necessarily make a full-year commitment or a weekend commitment of some of that, and wondering what we can do to encourage our schools to offer sort of a part-time, club-based sort of opportunity. And so I did share that with Dr. Churchett during our one-on-one, but I just wanted to put it out there that our music programs at the elementary have been so strong, and that there is just, you know, so much talent in our community. So it would be awesome to provide as many opportunities for as many students that are looking for just something on the creative and fun side, bringing joy to those students. So I think that's the end of my list. That spark, any, one more thing for Ms. Visnick?
Somebody mentioned earlier, the Monday Martin Luther King event is here. The doors open at 8:30, program starts at 9:00, and it is only an hour. It is only planned for an hour this year, a fairly short program. Come on, come on down and participate.
Thank you for that reminder. I don't intend to keep us here all evening. If we have a motion to adjourn, I'll entertain it.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. How about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We do need to do a quick roll call. Mayor Cahill?
Mais oui.
Bien sûr. Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie?
C.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
I really wish I had a more clever response, but yes. I barely speak English.
I'll throw in a "yah," and that's seven to zero. We're adjourned. Thank you so much, BevCam, as always, for providing your service to us and the community, and making sure that our meetings are available to all of our community. Have a great night, everyone.